Cook, Hopkins, Osnabruck, Patterson.
Here.
Richardson.
Here.
Aaron Scott.
Here.
Phil Scott.
Here.
Wonkel.
Here.
Womrowski.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
There's Laurie.
And Laurie.
And Laurie.
Got her gentleman with her, two gentlemen.
She had to collect a shoe from the roof before we went in.
Oh my.
Yeah, I can put it back on the side, I think it is.
I can't imagine.
Yeah.
Was it a shoe?
Yeah. No, it wasn't a shoe.
Well, we've got three things under the mayor's report. The first one is discuss approving consulting services at the Jacksonville Municipal Landfield.
Can you take that?
Yes.
As part of the work we're doing with IEPA to get the landfill closed, the next step is to complete work pursuant to compliance commitment agreement with IEPA. Consultants that we're using, Fairground and Joel Zirkle who was here earlier talking to me, I prepared the proposal for their work in connection with that for the $20,200. And work is being started as we speak, a lot of it, putting the ground cover in, getting the, putting cap or repairing the caps and so forth, less crew is primarily the group that's doing it. Any questions about that at all?
All right, and next one liquor sales. No, I don't know about that one either.
All right, Andy talked to me about this at the agenda meeting. He would like to move ahead with the council's approval with an ordinance revision allowing liquor sales on Sunday just as your license allows Monday through Thursday, in other words, Sunday morning liquor sales. This came up several years ago and barely was defeated. In fact, Andy may have passed a tie-breaking vote on it, but he feels that he wants to go ahead and do that now while we still have two members of the council who'll be leaving fairly quick but have been involved in this in the past. And for that reason, we brought up for discussion, he also would like, he would suggest that we do this at the next meeting, an ordinance revision with the emergency clause. Give you heads up on that now.
I would do with emergency clause.
Okay. But keep in mind, you'll be losing two aldermen who may vote for it the first time and will be going the second time, but that's up to you.
I'm actually the one that brought it up to the mayor that I think we need to do it, based on how it's impacting things like Case Creek and their inability to have like a Sunday brunch kind of event for baseball teams and stuff like that, and the links. And I think we should follow along.
What time is the, what time is it right now? Noon?
Noon.
And also like golf events, the country club and other items, can't sell stuff on Sunday mornings, they have to, like fundraisers and whatnot.
What's the trend with other municipalities?
Most of them have relaxed, what he's called the old blue laws that you couldn't serve any kind of alcohol on Sunday. Most of them have relaxed those to say, Sunday now. The idea was if you're selling alcohol, is that keeping people away from church? And we don't think that that's really the argument that was out there in past years. So I would certainly say the trend from a commercial standpoint is to allow the sales because they're going to take place somewhere. And maybe just outside town or a convenience store someplace else if you can't buy alcohol. So.
What is South Jacksonville?
I don't know. I was going to check on that, didn't get a chance to do that. I think they're probably known as well, but I don't know that for sure.
I thought we relaxed it on the links.
I think the way we left it was that Andy had the discretion occasionally to do that if there was a major event, but it's not relaxed completely now.
Oh, really?
No.
I guess I would love some community feedback too. You know, I mean, I totally get what the trends are with other municipalities, but I want to get some feedback from community members and those living in my ward to see how they feel about it. So let's ask them. Put down the agenda. There goes the agenda.
I think it's a good change to make.
Okay. We'll be on the agenda next meeting.
And resurfacing the downtown alleyway.
Don't help me with that.
Okay, well, he never gave me any direction on it.
Everybody know what that one, Terry, you know what that is?
That's my question.
What's yours? Gentlemen, Eric Pack.
If you don't mind, I'm Eric Pack. I've met many of you. If you don't know, my wife and I have a bad habit of restoring downtown buildings. We've already done two and we've just picked up two more. We'll send those down. We just picked up 207, 209, South Sandy Street. It shares the back alleyway behind Don's and the Depot. I don't know if you're familiar with that area. I've got pictures involved in there. Basically, it's not in good condition. I've spoken with both these gentlemen. It's good to finally meet you. I'll come back and shake your hand in a moment. Tell them, Terry, it's kind of, it's rough terrain. There's gravel, asphalt, dirt, there's erosion problems. Oops, sorry. Got one more. There you go. Hand that over to you gentlemen. Surprised no drunks have fallen and tried to see the city and a friend of mine said, "Well, they've fallen, they just don't remember to see the city." We are completely gutting and rebuilding those two buildings, 207 and 209, South Sandy Street. It's going to be two retails below, possibly one mixed, depending upon what comes in. We have interest already and we're just in the gutting phases. And two very nice loft apartments. I think some of you have seen some of the work we've done. We do everything with a vintage style. We build it right. We gut it down, brand new electrics, plumbing, heating, cooling. I don't want to have to fix it again. So these are revitalizing the buildings. The back portion, if you see some of the pictures, 207 has a small courtyard that's going to be concreted. 209 has an old extension onto it with no basement, it was a crawl space. We're going to turn that into a one-car off-street garage parking. Already have the building permits set for it. What we're mainly running into are drainage and erosion issues and delineation of parking and right-of-way lines. Second page has kind of highlighted to show you the right-of-way, the alley proceeds south and then west to the next alley. Couldn't find the name of that road. Basically, right now, everybody parks wherever they feel like it. And if we do make it into a garage, that's going to lock in whoever the resident is or the business using the garage in the back. The other issues we're running into, a lot of the buildings are still draining into the sewer slash storm drains, which is against city code. I've changed the ones from 207 to 209, but that's exacerbating the erosion issues that we have down there. So I'd like to work with Mr. Ballinger if possible. He had mentioned that in 2019, it's slated for resurfacing that parking lot anyway. I'd like to see if we can resurface the alleyway, have delineation of right-of-way and parking, and possibly address the drainage. I don't know if we can put pipes underneath asphalt in order to drain appropriately. But it's creating a considerable issue and with all the erosion, the dirt, the gravel, it's hard to keep it clean. You get a lot of broken glass back there, all sorts of other issues. Only other thing on that, they also have a dumpster out behind Don's, and that's mainly to block people from coming through the section that the Depot owns. I believe the alleyway between Don's and the Depot was sold to both parties. Each has a half. Don's built on their smoking section, the Depot left theirs. With the garbage trucks backing in there all the time, that really plays havoc on the asphalt as well. Wondering if we could possibly put a vertical post, whether removable or not, and possibly have the dumpsters a little bit further south. Because we have already interest from an interesting restaurant that might want to come up and use both buildings. If we make that back area, the courtyard, concreted, it could theoretically be a patio, depends on what the business wants to do with it. But cleaning up the area, make it a little nicer, removing the dumpster, sure would go a long ways. And I believe that's in line with Jacksonville Main Streets and Jacksonville's goals to help revitalize the downtown, which is what we're definitely trying to do. But I know you're busy, that's what I have. Do you have any questions for me or anything I can be of assistance with?
I can only tell you, like in the seventies, that south side was all paved back then. It was all paved, right there.
Well, all the erosion's washing it out, and there's actually about three inches of particulate matter that's built up on top of the asphalt.
So, point of clarification.
Yes ma'am.
This is the area that you intend to do the courtyard here?
That's going to be the courtyard, that's 207, South Sandy.
Okay.
And this extension in the back part of the alley will be the off-street garage. And if you're looking at the blue-green pipe sticking out, that's actually, there's a small, about a sidewalk width between 201 Morgan, which houses the politician's office, the barber shop and Don's. Water drains in there, and that's the drain that's going into the sewer, storm drains, and it just continually builds up. And with these old buildings, there's a huge issue of water seepage into the basement, which is, that's why so much is rotting out. So we're trying to get the drainage a little bit better.
It's this area they tried to get us to give away?
Yeah.
And this is whiskey.
The east-west portion is why they requested vacate last year.
The Depot.
The Depot did.
Right, I know one of the things that we worked on, if you guys look at his photographs on page three, I believe, let me know if I'm accurate, the first picture is the way it originally looked, and then we worked with the city, Les and his guys, to come in and put the additional asphalt in to eliminate some of what this was happening here.
Not too long ago, they put a little bit more asphalt in there.
Right, we did that, what, in the spring, Les? Is that right?
Mm-hmm.
But another was, we had a lot of talk about whether we would vacate that and allow the Depot to have it. And it's mine, are you wanting that? Or you're just wanting us to pave it?
I'm just wanting to make sure that the businesses or residents using the garage can get out.
Right.
But also to make it a nicer area since we're completely regutting these buildings.
Really, it needs to be paved all the way down.
Right, but I remember we had that conversation about it being a fire zone and whether cars could be in and out, and then we had the delivery issue with, and then cars parking all along into the back.
And back in, we didn't know what was going on in here.
That was if we gave it away.
But if I made.
And we didn't give it away.
We didn't.
We didn't give it away.
No.
So if we pave it and clean it up, then people can use it.
But we need to say no parking because right now people are parking.
Delivery, it needs to be set up for delivery.
Right. That'd be nice. Now, the actual, the fire alley you're talking about in the south of 209, South Sandy, is actually technically listed as city parking lot. So it is not a right-of-way thoroughfare. I do not care if we keep the western extension. Actually, there's asphalt built up on the curb, and that's how the garbage trucks back in there. I have no problem if you want to do something with the western portion, as long as there's some way to get in and out, both for deliveries and the entities that are renting the buildings.
Just to refresh the council, also, the thing we talked about too was eliminating those two parking spaces to the south to allow for that type of delivery, because I know Don's and the Depot and the garbage trucks were interested in that, as well as we had talked about maybe moving, asking to move those trash dumpsters and maybe trying to do something different.
Those trash dumpsters were kind of there at our request to prevent cars from driving through that alley.
Exactly.
Because as narrow as it is, well, Danny and the help of the Depot said you'd have cars coming through there at night. So that was kind of a temporary measure until something else, either some standards or something, are put up there.
Right, exactly. Takes quite a nice vertical hole.
Cover hole with unloading zone or something.
Yeah.
Getting the last unloading zone.
Loading, unloading.
Yeah.
But the asphalt, as I recall our conversation, isn't, isn't dependent upon the weight of garbage trucks. This was just a short-term fix. So whatever, whatever long-term fix, we need a better surface, if I recall. Is that right?
I was for banning that square. A plus to ten-foot that.
Depot.
Depot wanted. So here we are.
But if we have abandoned that, then Eric couldn't get as much, have a fill of them, as much access and stuff to it, because then you would have been locked out.
Well, I'm, I'm all right with, you know, but I think we need to take, like, a long-term, think this through, decide what we actually want to happen with that alley.
I guess I want to say thank you to Eric for your work, you and your wife are doing on the building. I think the city should take care of it properly.
It's definitely, I agree.
Paved, yes, but we need to make sure that we're taking care of all the other issues too, with delivery and whether.
Not all can be handled, yeah.
Well, yeah, but it's got to be paved for all that.
And we also know that Mr. Kindred has a garage that he has access to. We know people are parking in that alley that like to visit the Depot. So I think there's a lot of things that we need to take into consideration, which would include signing, signage, or, you know, just letting people know what the intention is for that particular path. So just want to be thoughtful.
Should this go special study, to work it out?
Just be thoughtful, moving forward, what our intentions are, not stretch.
Well, I don't think I've ever seen, he's already got a permit to go drive back.
I think that's fine, but right now people are parking in that, in that alley right now. Drive by tonight when you leave, there'll be people parking that alley.
They park behind the Depot.
Absolutely.
No one's, I've not seen anybody actually in the alleyway, but you're right, deliveries and.
Right here, all this usually has cars parked in it.
Absolutely.
All the way. This is open.
Are there signs?
This is open, no.
Is it in the front?
No, there's no signs. We talked about that before, but it never happens.
So let's get up some signs and then get some.
Was looking at that back there and the elevations and everything, I think an engineer here needs to look at it and find out, and shoot it, not just look at it with your eyes, but shoot it with an instrument to be able to see, make sure there's going to be plenty of fall. I mean, Les will say, tell you, you've got to have so much gravel and stuff underneath the roadway to put down new asphalt. And if it doesn't have enough gravel underneath there, so I, I mean, I think somebody needs to look at it from an engineering point to make sure what, what all needs to be done and not just throw blacktop on top of it, and if it, if it's going to break right back out or whatever, I mean.
Or if it doesn't align with his long-term plans and what his intentions are.
Right.
We just need to be thoughtful and put a plan together.
And plus, I mean, you've got two or three other businesses riding through there, so I mean, I personally, myself, I just think somebody, like I say, an engineer needs to look at it and study what needs to be done back there.
So Eric, you weren't planning on just having it happen soon, William?
Les, you think that as well, that we need that $10,000 engineering study first?
Yeah, it has to be done.
Before I get to that, and again, the drainage issue, because if we take the drains out of the storm sewer drains, if we just asphalt it, you're going to have all the water running down there, which then when it freezes, you've got dripping hazards. I'm planning in within the next three or four months to open up the garage and pour the concrete in the back. And I was going to put, once I've spoken with Mr. Ballinger about that, pipes underneath my concrete so that the drains from the roof can drain off. Because you're getting a considerable amount of water, as you can see from the erosion right there.
So your request is next year when we redo the parking lot, to redo the area?
Absolutely, I'm in no real hurry. I'm taking my time with these buildings and I'm, I'm not demanding anything or wanting anything for free, but I, I think it would be nice to revitalize it. I've been to many European countries and it's amazing what they can do with little patio courtyard restaurants, and it could be turned into something really unique. There is sufficient lighting at least back there, so it's not quite a safety issue. But I just think it could make it really nice. If not, I'll still live with it. But we, like I said, we are completely gutting and rebuilding these two buildings. They're basically going to be brand-new buildings in an old shell with the vintage style we like to keep.
If I remember correctly, Les, all the water goes to Sandy now, doesn't it?
Oh, the drain, yes. The, from my buildings, they drain through terracotta, behind the buildings, down through the sewer lines, and then out to the front. The Don's drain in the picture of the little sidewalk area between the buildings, I've not been able to figure out where that goes into, but you can see all the debris that's floating in there. The Depot has one that just drains right out there next to the dumpster, creates a nice muddy area. And mine, I've directed to additional roofs and down, it's coming out in the southwest corner of the buildings, but that's right on the area where the asphalt and gravel has built up over the years, approximately three inches over the existing asphalt surface.
Is paper be paid for the tip lines?
So you used to be able to skate through trees.
Sounds like they used to come out. For the infrastructure, does that happen?
I think some of these pictures are the same day.
They need to push that back in, soften that.
Right, so we found the money. So he used tip funds to do it, thanks to him.
Well, I think we should send it to Planning and Public Works and make sure that there's a plan in place for moving forward with his intentions and with Mr. Kindred and with the owners of the Depot and.
We can look into it.
With Les and Terry.
Any other questions I can assist with?
Thank you for taking the time.
Thanks for your time, I'd love to be a part of it if possible, and either way, I'm happy no matter what.
All right, city attorney's report.
The one item we talked about briefly at the last meeting, I discussed it earlier, and that's to amend the TIF treaty ordinance to remove the five-block radius restriction from the ordinance. First reading tonight.
A committee report, Planning and Public Works.
We have five items tonight, Mr. Mayor. Pro ten. I think four, first board, Mr. Burke's going to have to help with. First one is discuss amending a TIF grant.
I don't think you've got that.
Nope.
You got that?
No.
Thanks a lot.
Unless anybody else does. That is the Big Brother, Big Sister demolition project. Because of the abatement of asbestos, the cost ran a little bit higher than we had approved in the TIF agreement. It's about $3,010 in addition. So basically, we're just amending the TIF agreement, increasing the amount to be paid to remove this asbestos.
Is that the old building right there on the corner?
It's torn down.
It's the house that was torn down and played next to their office building.
So now they asked me to include that?
I think it was more, it was more asbestos abatement than not.
It's a pretty rough old house.
Crazy stuff.
Everybody okay with that? So we'll go on to number two, discuss engineering agreement with Hutchinson Engineering Incorporated for the Safe Route School Project.
A week and a half ago, the Department of Transportation announced their Safe Route School program for the upcoming year. I think they've got about 26 million this year, I forget now exactly. Maximum amount per municipality is $200,000. That's 100% grant, so there is no match on that. It is, applications are due in, beginning in November, if I recall, or mid-November. One of the preference, preferences to the selection of the process of the projects will be if there was any land acquisition and/or is your, your project been approved by department or your plan's complete, are the shelves ready. Spoke with Les, spoke with the mayor, and we spoke with Superintendent Pastasik a little bit about some potential projects. I have identified, we've talked about some projects that would largely impact Washington, namely the crossing at Prairie at College, Prairie at State, and the sidewalk between them, Down College, Down Koskiosko, Smorkonana, because right now there's a few sidewalks down there where the kids, there is none, so the kids walk in the street. So we're looking at doing some sidewalk, new sidewalks, new crossings, flashing signals that'll be push-button actuated for, for the Washington School. So the maximum grant you would get would be $200,000. This would be your own expense if you're selected.
Do you have anything around Jacksonville Middle School?
I'm sorry?
Have you considered any projects around Jacksonville Middle School?
I think there is plenty of sidewalk to go around that could use.
So this is only sidewalk program? Because some people.
Right now, for this year. Now, next year, there'll be another, there'll probably be another next year.
If somebody has some, the neighbors in the area had concerns about the school region at night, thinking that some of the streets aren't lit well or they have.
There's that Prairie stuff over there, it's bad, they're trying to take our sidewalk.
There's some sidewalk that comes from, from Washington, or no sidewalk, that runs from Washington to Church Street, for example. So the kids are in the streets, a little, little bit dangerous during dismissal time. We've talked, we've talked with press as well, so.
That's the greatest, I think the, the, it used to be 50/50, so.
That's what I was getting at. This is, this is kind of a, a one-time shot, so we want to make sure we, we get the name and the hat and get as much of it as we can get, you know, so that's the plan.
Good. Any other questions? We'll move on to number three, discuss agreements regarding the East Michigan Avenue and FT project.
You're done with what we were originally indicated that you were going to have to do, but I, you're a central office, has changed, changed the program a little bit. This was a joint project between you and the village. We set the plans up so that the, your half of the street, the work on your half of the street was to be paid for by you, and their, their half was to be paid by, paid by them. It was a joint project. You received the TARP funds, the 80,000-pound money. That was offset from the total cost, and we rearranged some stuff, so it still works out pretty close to 50/50. The, the project is, once the plans got to central office, I didn't feel comfortable with having two agencies on a single contract. So because you received the TARP funds and you, you are technically the lead agency, you will be the responsible party for the entirety of the contract. With that said, that is, that is what the resolution for the supplemental motor fuel tax funds is for, that's to pay for the portion that the village would have been paying, okay? So we'll do that. The contract will run all the way through the city. The village, we have another agreement that Dan has looked at that you will also pass tonight, which is an intergovernmental agency agreement that spells out that they recognize you're the lead agency, you recognize that they are the subordinate, subordinate agency. They will be reimbursing you for the money that you've allocated out of your motor fuel tax. That money is coming out of their motor fuel tax. So they will be basically writing you a check that is deposited back in your motor fuel tax to offset your, your expense, okay? So it's a net zero, and you're done, you don't win or lose. Yeah, just additional payboards, so. Pretty simple.
Still on target for September?
September, yeah, third week of September, I think, is the letting. Probably we'll get started on some curb work and sidewalk and ADA ramps. I don't know that they'll have the paving done this fall, we'll see, see what the temperature does.
Okay, number four, discuss awarding bids for the Church Street, the Mexican Parking Lot Resurfacing Project.
Les has in his budget, in, in some capital improvement funds, if I remember correctly. We're, we're going to mill and overlay Church Street between College and State. Included in that is the overlay of two municipal parking lots. Parking lot behind Charaz and AG Edwards, that parking lot there, as well as the mill and resurface of the parking lot just south of Mulligan's. That's, that's a city lot. So those are the two lots that will be done this year. As Les mentioned, the lot that we're looking at, doing at, is the very lot you guys were just talking about in the future, which would be, I think, next year. It was slated for next year. That's one of the other municipal lots we would be looking at, doing next year. As part of the East State project, the municipal lot at Hamilton will be done. So that lot will be taken care of during the East State project. So just to let you know kind of what was going on, we had, we had two bidders on the project, K Vass and Illinois Valley Paving. K Vass was the little bidder at $125,201, and I think that was about what the budget amount was, if I'm not mistaken, so.
Budget was 150.
150.
Alderman Scott, in the past, you tried to put, instead of being good for the state to put in sprinklers for, around the city hall. Does this impact being able to put sprinklers in if you want to get the money to do that? Are you still trying to do that?
It's, it's already, we've already paid for it. We've, we've got the stuff, the, to do it.
Oh, okay.
In the fall.
Okay, so you, if it gets resurfaced?
They doesn't have any bearing on anything.
No, no, it's all lined up in the grass.
No, I mean, I don't know how you get the water out there, so that's the question.
Well, the waters are, when they put the new water line in three years ago up to the post office, we put a four-inch line in underneath the concrete, it's sitting out there, ready to go.
Okay.
Any questions? Number five is discuss changes to the traffic and vehicle ordinance regarding a right-of-way of intersection.
That'd be neat, yeah?
Yeah.
Up there in industrial park for East Gate, where you're going to call it, right now, East Gate has got two yield signs on it, and Harold Cox is the right-of-way street. It comes up to a T. I talked to the chief about it, and I don't know if you guys, everybody wouldn't look at it or not, but it just makes no sense to me. And I had two, two complaints about it, that's what brought to my attention. I would say before it got developed, that's why it was like that.
why it was like that. I think it needs changed.
Harold Cox is a T intersection, more or less, so it'd be changed just opposite.
Or yield.
They're just switching the yield signs.
And East Gate would have to be the right-of-way.
I think East State's got two yield signs and we'll go to one more sign then.
While we're at it, I talked to Alderman Scott about this previously, but I've also received two complaints about, there's a stop sign when you come in off of, this is Morton here. When you come in off of Morton, I guess what we call Southeast Gate, there's a stop sign right there and then there's no stop sign over here. But the theory that when this gets developed, cars want to go through, you can stop people. But my proposal is since we're, we're adjusting that to, in response to complaints, that we adjust that in response to complaints. And then when we build this in 20, 30 years, we just put the stop sign back.
Pardon? Pogway?
No, that's, that's another topic, but I'm just talking about this right here, just trying to make it nicer for the, the trucks going in there. I know I went out there just to look and I took a picture and the very first truck I saw just rolled through the stop sign. So we're basically opening it up for a professional driver to get a ticket for something that's very silly. So I'd like to just...
At this point, Dan will have to bring that up.
Yeah, I think it, I'm not quite fond of it, but I can get something prepared for the next meeting to do the same thing with this.
Okay, cause I was just thinking about amending it, cause that's just kinda like what your ordinance looks like?
Yeah.
Just like labeling what it is?
Yeah, that's all we'll need to do, but I would like to take a look at it. I don't think there's any gonna be a controversy about it, but.
Okay. So just pass it as it is today and we'll get amended for next time to add that in there? Okay. Everyone, anyone else have any thoughts on that? Seems like a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Public Protection, Alderman Oldman.
Sure, we have three items tonight. Discuss accepting bid for a K-9 squad car for the Jacksonville Police Department.
Yeah, I'll actually address one and two, three at the same time, if you don't mind, since they're both dealing with K-9. So we put out for bids to purchase a new K-9 vehicle using federal forfeited funds, so we didn't have to draw from the taxpayers' dollars. And the only bid we got back skip was West Town Ford Correct for a 2019 SUV. So I recommend that we accept that bid for, for that car. However, where I put in three to discuss the K-9 program, our K-9 Bo, I think I might've mentioned this some time ago in the beginning of the year address, that he is getting some age on him. Currently, he is eight years old and he's been suffering a few health issues recently. He was scheduled for recertification at the end of this month, which would certify him for another year. His certification runs out on November 17th of 18. At the recommendation of the handler and the vet, we're no longer gonna send him to recertification. We, we are afraid that we may shorten his quality of life in retirement. The recommended age for retiring K-9s is between seven and 10 years. Obviously, Bo is eight years old. That just doesn't affect purchasing a new K-9 vehicle as part of retiring Bo, their dog. I have spoke with the Citizens Police Academy alumni who have offered to purchase this dog for us. And they are currently running a fundraiser right now with the caveat that those proceeds would go towards the purchase of a new K-9. However, I didn't want to go all in with this without at least notifying the council that the Citizens Police Academy alumni has the intent to purchase this dog from, for us. That would be covering the cost of the dog. Obviously, we would still cover the training and the requirements for certification to continue the program, but it would alleviate us the burden of purchasing the, the animal, which would be, the purchase would come upon recommendation of the police department. They would just not go buy us a dog and say, here's your new K-9. We would go through the same process that we did when we purchased the last few dogs. We would do our research and we would purchase based on recommendations and their funding. So I wanted to bring that up tonight to, to you all to make sure that's something that you would accept if they decide to purchase that for us.
Do you use the same K-9 officer?
We are going to retire the officer with the dog. And that, Scott Cleveland was our last K-9 handler. He's met his three-year obligation as the handler. As a matter of fact, he's been our handler for more than three years. And we're, he has agreed to step down with the dog and we will free up another physician.
Does he want to?
Yes.
Or is he just agreeing to because he was asked?
No, both. He wants to. I, I didn't ask him. I, I asked him if he wanted to continue as the handler and he said that he would like to step down and allow another officer to have an opportunity to handle the dog.
Then you have somebody else who wants to?
I think it will probably be a heated, there's several guys that want to take over the K-9 program. So I want to continue with accepting the bid for the, and with projects seem to, that I have slated out for years, seem to jump up right in the middle of things. So I wanted to get you guys' consent to allow the Citizens Police Academy to continue their fundraiser to purchase the K-9.
Is Bo staying with the handler?
Yes. I believe we had a, Dan, you might know more about that. Was there a resolution that, at one point, where the K-9?
Yes.
The handler, when the dog retires, has the option to, we sign over the burden of the, or the insurance liabilities and things to the handler. And Scott has chose to keep Bo in the event that's still the case.
That's great.
So he will live with Scott and his family.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Item number two is discuss amending resolution awarding bid for three utility squad cars. Would that also be you?
Yes, and skip, I think can address this.
What, what happened is we, we approved three squad cars with them and in their wise wisdom, they decided that one of the cars needed to be kept and they switched cars. So therefore, West Town reduced the, because it was, they went from a 14 to an 11 trade-in. And it reduced the cost by $3,500. So you're actually adding $3,500 to what you previously approved for the three cars. The police department decided to keep the 14 and trade-in the 11 because obviously it was a better car, obviously it's $3,500 better. So that's why we had to amend the dollar amount for the three vehicles.
These are the only bids we got. We didn't get, we didn't go state bid.
We sent out the bids.
Yeah.
To several dealerships and the only ones that came back were West Town.
Yeah, Marley didn't even bid on this one. Mike?
I don't think, we didn't even, West Town was the only one we received bids on for all four cars, the K-9 as well as the other three.
Well, we have to, thank you.
I just wanted to ask a question. Do we need to give him just a consensus on everybody's all right with this K-9 program? Just a general agreement that you can go forward, cause I don't know if we really did that.
Yeah.
All right. There's no special studies, utility, or any public comments? All right, let's move.